Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Pico Rivera City Council Meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mister City Manager, are there any changes to our agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Madam City Clerk, can we kindly do the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Director Dr. Sanchez?
Present.
Councilmember Director Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Director Camacho?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chair Laura?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Lutz?
Here.
All present.
Thank you for that. And now we do want to acknowledge our Commissioner in attendance, Robert Martinez, from the Planning Commission. And now we'll move on to our invocation. And our invocation will be provided by Mayor Pro Tem Andrew Laura, and our flag salute will follow that, provided by Planning Commissioner Robert Martinez.
Can everyone please stand? Please bow your head. God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the community of Pico Rivera. And continue to remind us that all, that, of everything that is done here today. We ask that your, that your presence and that your mercy and that your justice be with those who are suffering throughout the world. Please be with families that are experiencing hardship. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Now we'll move on to our special presentations, and we have two presentations. The first one will be a certificate of recognition, and that is the Community Backpack Giveaway that we had mid-year, prior to the Scholastic School Year. And we have two recipients, and we'll go ahead and have Councilmember Dr. Monica Sanchez lead this particular certificate of recognition.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I wanted to explain, back in August, we had a large Community Backpack Giveaway right before school started, that we had hundreds of backpacks, lines all the way to North Park Middle School. And we had several partners that were recognized already. They had logos and a number of our business members in the community. Unfortunately, we ran out, and there were still some families in line, and we were very disheartened by that. And I put a call out to the community and said, does anyone else have backpacks we can donate, that you can donate to us? And we have UPS workers that came and said, we collected some, and we have some that we can give to the community. So we still, we had some delivered, and we had families that were able to come and pick up backpacks later on if they had not received one on our official backpack giveaway right before school started. So they were not even on our logo because it was after the event. But I wanted to give official recognition to two in particular. I'm gonna have them remind me of the name of their, their part, they work for UPS, and they have a organization they're part of as Latino Employees Association. I don't remember the exact title at the moment, but they'll remind me. And they completely organized in their own free time, they don't get paid for this during this time, and got volunteers, donations from other UPS employees. And we received a box, a couple, several boxes of these backpacks that went to our students in Pico Rivera. So I wanna officially recognize them because they were not originally recognized even on the flyer or, or as part of the, the official program in the beginning. So hopefully in the new year, in the new school year, we can, we can join them again. But I wanna recognize that they did come to the rescue, and I would like to call up Jessica Barajas and Martha Luna. This is presented in recognition for your hard work in collecting and donating school supplies and backpacks at our City of Pico Rivera Annual Community Backpack Giveaway. Your generosity is greatly appreciated, has made a difference to the family, families and children in the city of Pico Rivera. Thank you.
So at UPS, we have a Latino Business Resource Group, LBRG, and it's just a resource group to support other Latinos, but it's not just for Latinos, it's not exclusive, it's inclusive. We have other resource groups for other, like the Veterans Business Resource Group, and so we get together, we volunteer. We just planted trees a couple weeks ago in Lincoln Heights. So it's just, you're just trying to be a good community, a corporate community, and just give back to the different communities that we're in. Pico Rivera, actually, I grew up here. My first job was in this, actually, this, what do you call this, chamber? And yeah, I'm just always looking for a way to give back. Michael coordinated, and he's part of the, we're all part of the Governor's Outreach Program.
I think also with the LBRG group, with this event, we raised over, over three hundred and forty-five backpacks. So it was, this happened to be perfect timing that we had additional backpacks to give to the city here in Pico. Half of those backpacks were also sent over to Hawaii as well, when they had the fires and children were in need as well over there. So we are restructuring our Latin BRG, we are outreach more, and looking to partner in how we can communicate and support our communities here. Thank you.
Thank you again to Martha Luna and Jessica Barrera from UPS for providing their volunteerism in that Community Backpack Event that we had during the beginning of the Scholastic Year. We thank you and we appreciate you. Now, our next special presentation is Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Operation Update. And if we can have, I believe, Mister City Manager, we have a presentation on that?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a presentation. Julia Gonzalez will be giving this presentation. LA County Board of Supervisors, a few weeks ago, directed staff to come back with an ordinance that would create the Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Operations, and that would be LA countywide, not just in unincorporated. And we're here to give you an update on what that is and actually, and some of the steps that we're taking to hopefully influence the board to implement into their ordinance when it comes back in February. Julia?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. So the, the bill was first introduced in two thousand and nineteen, which established the permission to allow mini restaurants or small scaled restaurants at a private home. So it could be at a single-family dwelling or an apartment unit. So they're calling these Micro Enterprise Home Kitchen Operations, or Micos. The bill was later amended later in two thousand and nineteen, and it gave full discretion to each county to either opt in or opt out of the program. So each county is going through the process of permitting or not permitting, allowing these mini restaurants in private residence. In two thousand and twenty-two, the bill was again updated or amended to allow two compact mobile food operations, and those are basically street vendor food carts that would be allowed to use a private residence as a commissary. And a commissary would be used where they stock or restock the food cart, food carts for the street vendors. And they can also store their food carts at the private residence. And then earlier this year in two thousand and twenty-three, the bill was amended again to allow up to ninety meals per week and increase gross annual sales to a hundred thousand dollars, unless the county authorizes a higher amount. And there's really no stipulated cap on what that higher amount is. So here's a list of the counties that have approved Micos or in the process of approving Micos. There's fifty-eight counties and the cities, so we're, we're trying to get an updated list from the county. There's three counties that opted out from their counties allowing Micos in, in their jurisdiction. So what is required for permitting? So an individual would have to get a county public health permit. Only one permit can be issued to a home, either cottage food operator or a Miko, but not both. And if you recall, back in two thousand and twelve, the state did approve the sale of prepackaged food at homes, not for restaurants, but for baked goods, anything that's dried, dried food, and does not need refrigeration. Any person involved in a Miko would need to obtain a food handler card certificate, and the food needs to be prepared, cooked, and served on the same day. So the meals are limited to thirty meals per day, which means thirty customers at a residential home per day, up to ninety meals per week. The food can be consumed on-site, so that's the restaurant portion, or picked up or delivered. The individuals prohibited from acting as a caterer or wholesaler, and they may have an outdoor barbecue or an outdoor wood burning oven. Inspections are limited to once per year and are by appointment only. They're exempt from the county's food grading program. And if approved by the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, they can sell alcohol. So Miko is not allowed to use third-party delivery apps such as Uber unless the person is disabled. And at this point, they're only required to notify the landlords that they're gonna have a mini restaurant at their home. So what can cities do? They cannot opt in or out of the Miko program. They can enforce noise or nuisance complaints and any outdoor signage. The city can however adopt a local ordinance to prohibit the storage of a compact mobile food operation, which is the street vendor food cart. However, it cannot prohibit the use of a home for a commissary. So again, they can take the street food cart vendor to the home to stock and restock, but if we adopt an ordinance, they wouldn't be able to store the food cart there, which it's gonna be really hard to differentiate if they're taking it to the same home. So on October third, the county unanimously recommended to move forward with the Miko program in LA County. So now they're, the county staff is tasked with crafting an ordinance by February two thousand and twenty-four, and they're going around to cities asking for comments. So staff did prepare a letter to the County Board of Directors, making certain recommendations, one of which is not to permit more than thirty meals per day or ninety meals a week. So as stated before, the county can approve a higher amount, but that's not being stipulated. So we're advising or recommending that they just limit it to the state-approved amount. Limit the number of customers that a residential home can have at one time. Again, they can have thirty clients per day. It doesn't stipulate like within an hour, so potentially they can have thirty customers in a couple of hours, which potentially can have parking concerns. We recommend that they include, include a fee for cities to recover enforcement costs, so any noise complaints, odor, or parking issues, and require that the landlord or property owner approve the Miko operation. Stated before, they're, at this point, they're just asking the individuals to notify their landlords. So we're, we're asking the county to require that the landlord approve Micos. We're also recommending to restrict onsite dining or limit the hours of operation to six P.M. We are requesting that they require the applicant to obtain a business license. We're also recommending to prohibit all pets in a household. Right now, the, the state only requires that pets not be allowed in this, in the kitchen area, but not in the entire home. We are recommending to prohibit the sale of alcohol, and also to prohibit the use of a residence as a commissary for a street, a street food vendor, as well as the storage of the street food vendor cart. We're also recommending they place distance requirements for these mini restaurants within a thousand feet of each other to prohibit overproliferation, and also to have a second unannounced inspection to ensure compliance. Right now, they only have one announced inspection by the county in, in one year's time. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Julia, for that presentation to my colleagues. It's open.
Thank you for, for that update. You know, I'm, I'm a big advocate for people with disabilities as a, as a nurse. I've worked with, throughout the years, with people with physical, mental disabilities. I didn't see anything where we would have to make the entrance ADA compliant. And also, I think it would be appropriate that the bathroom would be ADA compliant, just for people with disabilities.
We, we can definitely recommend those. I can tell you that a lot of these requirements that are for brick and mortars are not applying to, to these Micos.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but once again, if we're gonna, you know, we're, we're creating two class of customers here, right? If we're gonna create a restaurant in a home, it has to have, it has to be accessible to the public, right? You just can't say, no, just a certain class of people can come into the, to, to a restaurant, right? That's why, that's why these ADA laws exist. If we're just gonna exempt them, right, just because it's gonna be maybe an added expense or what have you, then that's, that's, for me, I, I'm not in favor of that. So I, I'd wanna make it very strict that it has to be ADA compliant opening and ADA compliant bathroom.
I would second that to be added in the city's recommendations.
Will do.
I concur with my colleagues and the recommendations, so let's move forward on that.
I, I would say in terms of just being sure there's running hot and cold water in terms of the concerns of where are they gonna wash their hands for the employees as well as, as people that are purchasing? So that, that would be something that would be a simple, you know, they need to have a facility to use, available to use the restroom.
I support my colleagues' recommendations.
And also, I just wanna highlight, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved this, and they approved that no grading policy like a brick and mortar, which is those grades of A through D, will not apply. Is that correct?
The, the food grading exemption is part of the state bill, and the county is essentially approving that.
Yes, Councilmember?
So as of right now, they, they may be, they're, they're operating potentially. Do we have knowledge of how many or what types of products they're selling?
So at this point, they're, they would be unlicensed because the county is proceeding to draft the first ordinance, and so they're asking for our comments, but we, we do not have an idea of how many unlicensed folks are doing this already.
Have we received any complaints or, or requests for this?
Not to my knowledge. We can follow up with our court enforcement, but that, that has not come to our attention. The only complaints that we do get are, are from unlicensed street vendors.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I just wanted to find-
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
I support these efforts and, and recommendations. But as we go into our residential areas, we know parking's at a premium. So when you have something like this, which you think is a good idea, how do we monitor that there's gonna be fifteen more cars on my street or your street? And how is that, who's gonna monitor, and what is that gonna create? What type of?
Councilmember, are you recommending that the staff add a parking permit requirement?
Let me just backtrack. Do we have to make a decision on this, or we can still add input later on? Okay, that's it.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Camacho?
Just to add some comments, you know, it's one of these, again, this is a state bill that has pretty much put the county as a responsible person to adopt, you know, good intention in the sense of trying to help out a micro business, but it has so many unintended consequences, it's gonna impact our community. I mean, it's, it's, it's so unfair to the fact that, as whether it be ADA requirements or letter grades, or, you know, good thing there's a food handling that is required, but, you know, all these brick and mortars are doing everything they can, mom and pop businesses, and so, you know, it, it's just gonna be, I mean, good intention, but we're gonna suffer the consequences here in the city in the sense of, we talked about all the above, parking and so forth. So I'm glad that staff has been on top of this and providing these level of recommendations, hopefully to a degree that they get adopted. But, you know, in essence, I would not support such a, I actually oppose the bill as a, as a whole, even in its inception, but it's already law. So now we have to now abide by it, and hopefully our recommendations are taken into account. But this is the types of issues and the many state laws that have come our way that takes that local controlability from us, that, that the residents will see it as us implementing these laws. But in essence, it's the state laws that we now must follow, and now in this case, the county, which is unfortunate, quite frankly.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. If I could get a second from one of my colleagues, after I, I, I'd like to direct staff that we would produce our own ordinance in regards to this item. And, and, and that ordinance would reflect some of these recommendations that have been, that I've given, that my colleagues have given. I think it's important that we protect these businesses that are going, going to be set up. We protect the neighbors around these businesses in terms of parking complaints. We protect those with disabilities, making sure that they have fair and equal access to these establishments. And, you know, I, I think, I think we need to do our due diligence, and I think that's something that, that we need to direct staff to draft our own ordinance, municipal letter ordinance. If I could get a second, please?
I second.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. I have a question. So the ordinance says only ninety days per week. So what I'm thinking is maybe it's intended like someone has a weekend business, and they operate only three days a week, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. Can we dictate which days, in which, like days of the week in which we would like or not like them to operate?
That's the intent of, behind the letter, is to have the county follow our recommendations via their ordinance. So yes, we, we can definitely make that recommendation, and, and we hope that the county implements that.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to thank you for the presentation, Julia. And now moving on to our public hearing. We have two items under public hearing, and now we'll go ahead and open public hearing item number one, which is a resolution amending the schedule of user fees for fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four. And Mister City Manager, do we have any memo?
We do have a presentation if council would like, but if you recall, we are moving these items forward with the user fees, and we are having a future discussion on park and recs fees at a later date.
Very good. Thank you for that. And Madam City Clerk, do we have any written communication on this public hearing item?
None were received, Mayor.
All right, and do we have any oral communication?
There were none received.
Okay, so now we'll kindly close the public hearing. And do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move, Mayor. Second.
All right, we have a first, Councilmember Garcia, a second, Mayor Pro Tem Laura. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Moving on to public hearing item number two, which is an ordinance amending the public, the Pico Rivera Municipal Code, adding chapter nine point five-two, social host liability. So we'll kindly open that public hearing now. Mister City Manager, do we have any memos?
Mayor, we do have a presentation we'd like to give the city council. If you recall, there's been a couple of incidents that happened recently regarding promoters promoting parties in various residents throughout the city of Pico Rivera. This is in response to that and how we can deal with those issues from happening in the future. So I'd like to turn it over to staff to give that presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think the City Manager covered the details of the presentation. I apologize that I couldn't be there this evening in person, but in my stead, Stephanie will be making the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Albi. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. The item before you this evening is an ordinance amending Title Nine, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare by adding chapter nine point fifty-two, Social Hosts Liability to the Pico Rivera Municipal Code. A social host is the law that holds individuals such as older peers, parents, landowners, and tenants responsible for underage drinking at parties on property they own, lease, or otherwise control. The purchase, possession, or consumption of alcohol by minors in public or commercial settings is already prohibited under state law. However, state law does not prohibit youth consumption of alcohol on private property. Establishing a social host ordinance can fill the gap in the law by providing law enforcement a tool to help address the problem of underage drinking at parties. Parties with youth drinking and drug use present a significant danger to both young people and the community due to the threat to public health, safety, and the quiet enjoyment of residential property, and just the general welfare of the community. The Pico Rivera Sheriff's Station received eight hundred and fifty-three calls for service for loud parties or music disturbing the peace between October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Many of these calls were the result of illegal flyer parties that are advertised on social media and function as a makeshift club that charges admission, serves alcohol, and often includes accessibility to illicit drugs. These events are marketed to patrons of all ages, but focused on underage youth. In addition, these events lack supervision or security and have recently led to violent and often deadly outcomes for participants in the community. To give a bird's eye view of the significant public health problem that underage drinking poses, excessive drinking is responsible for more than three thousand nine hundred deaths a year in the U.S. This data was obtained from the Center for Disease Control. And then a study from the American Medical Association also shows underage drinking is a factor in nearly half of all teen car crashes, which is the leading cause of death among teenagers. To look at statistics within the Pico Rivera community, the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two California Healthy Kids Survey of eleventh graders in the Rancho Unified School District reported that twenty-three percent of students found it, quote, "very easy" to obtain alcoholic beverages if they really wanted to, and nineteen percent indicating that it was, quote, "fairly easy." The proposed social host liability ordinance in intent is to reduce the opportunity for violent and criminal activity that frequently results from parties and similar gatherings. So what does this process look like? So once the sheriff's station, or the sheriff's department receives a call for service, an officer will respond to the location and assess the situation. The officer would then issue a warning and provide a notice. If more calls for service are received and the violation continues, the responding officer may issue an order requiring the gathering be disbanded and may cite or arrest the individuals. At that point, the responsible party will be issued a fine for violation. A first violation would be a two thousand five hundred dollar fine. A second violation would be a three thousand five hundred dollar fine, and a third violation would be a five thousand dollar fine. The proposed ordinance is consistent with ordinances passed by other California jurisdictions. The ordinance aims to prevent and reduce the prevalence of gatherings where alcoholic beverages, marijuana, and illegal substances are served to or consumed by underage persons. Staff recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, establishing chapter nine point fifty-two, Social Host Liability, and provide direction to staff as deemed appropriate. If approved, staff will bring forth the ordinance for adoption at a regularly scheduled city council meeting, and the ordinance shall become effective thirty days after its adoption. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Very good. Thank you for that. I would request on this ordinance here, first I want to ask if there is a maximum on the fines. Is there a limit to those fines?
The maximum would be the five thousand dollar fine. Again, everything within a twelve month period.
Very good. My recommendation, if I could have a second on this, is the first violation to be punishable with a three thousand dollar fine, and the second violation punishable with a five thousand, and the third violation to remain the same.
I would like to-
Mayor, just so we're clear, so I'm clear, because the first offense would be what amount, Mayor?
Three thousand is what I would recommend, upping it five hundred dollars. And then the second violation to five thousand.
All right.
And the third violation to remain the same.
Would be what, I'm sorry?
To remain the same at five thousand.
Five thousand, okay.
Mayor, if I may as well?
Yes.
I requested this ordinance or similar. The question would be, how were these amounts determined? And how are they comparable to other cities that have a similar ordinance? So maybe we could even go higher, you know, how were these dollar amounts? And the goal being to prevent these parties from happening and youth being able to access alcohol at these types of events.
The staff looked at other county ordinances and basically mimicked the amount of the fines. So it's like the average amount of the fines.
We took a look at Los Angeles, Thousand Oaks, San Diego, just to name a few of the ordinances that we looked at.
Councilmember, what amounts would be something that you'd be in favor of?
What was the highest in terms, in the city, the highest rates?
Five thousand, if I'm not mistaken, was Thousand Oaks.
I mean, similar to our street racing ordinance, our goal is the bigger the penalty, the less likely they're going to do it. And if they're big companies, promoter companies, even small companies, you know, targeting youth, providing these, I believe in let's try to prevent it. But I think we could, I support this. I want, I definitely would like to move to pass this forward, and perhaps when we bring it back, reconsider, I don't mind increasing the dollar amount.
Mayor, just have a-
Yes, Councilmember Camacho.
Question, clarification. I mean, as it compares to the current nuisance ordinance that we have, so obviously if somebody's having a party at their house, neighbor complains, the sheriff will go out there, provide a warning. Can you tell us, Captain, the steps of that, you know, second warning and then we fine at the same time, right? If you can, or maybe Steph.
Yes, sir. So when we get a call for service for a party, we send units as well as a supervisor, and we make contact with the homeowner or the initiator of the party to get a name and a, you know, contact information. And we essentially give them a warning. And for the most part, ninety-nine percent of the calls, the people that are at the residence are compliant, and we don't usually have a problem. So if we do have to go back and there is a fine that is required, then there are administrative citations that we can issue similar to fireworks or, you know, some of these other calls, and they're city, they're city citations.
What are those amounts again? Those citations?
They're pretty low. They're one hundred, two hundred, five hundred dollars.
So, I mean, we have parties, people have parties at their house at any given time, but just to distinguish that from this, it's just someone who's having, young kids in particular, having a advertised party with a flyer, charging at the entrance, selling alcohol. That's, I'm sure we distinguish those two.
Alcohol, marijuana, or other illegal substances.
Correct, yeah.
That's the difference.
So these are, this proposed social host liability ordinance is for publicly advertised parties or mass gatherings?
That's not one of the requirements, right? It doesn't have to say that. It may not have been publicly advertised, right?
Yeah, it may not be publicly advertised. We can use this as an enforcement tool. I'll give you one example. Over the weekend, and this will give us the ability to be more proactive in combination with our code enforcement. We were notified of a party that was being promoted by a promoter in the city. We activated code enforcement and the sheriff department. They brought it to our attention. We went out there, made contact with the, it was a twenty-year-old person that was having this party, notified him, this would be the ramifications if he moves forward. That didn't happen, and I guess his grandparents were away, and that's why he chose to have this party. So it gives us that other tool and that other capacity to deal with these issues in a more proactive basis. Because once it happens, there's hundreds of people there, it's very hard to break it down. There's a lot of disruption in the community, and so this gives us that one other tool that we can use.
And I support the amendment, and I support this ordinance. I just want to make sure that we distinguish from the two, because we've all gotten the calls from that resident that has recurring parties with live music on a regular basis that is, becomes a nuisance. But I don't want to be punitive for somebody that decides to have a party and got a warning, and all of a sudden we're hitting them with a five thousand dollar fine because, you know, so I just want to make sure that as we're enforcing this, we're distinguishing those two based on these, you know, categories as to the description of what order is applied. I, if that is an amendment to the recommendation, and that's a motion, I support that amendment.
Yes.
I would agree to that amendment as well.
I'm sorry, can I hear the amendment again?
As I understand, let me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me try and provide some clarity on the purpose of the ordinance, the adjustment in the, in the levels of fine, certainly that's at the council's discretion. We will incorporate that in the, into the final ordinance for your second reading. The purpose of this is to hold responsible the property owner or the, you know, the property owner of when there are parties that are held at their, their location. It, first of all, there's no requirement that it has to be advertised on social media. It is merely the fact that the property owner is aware or should have known of such an activity. So the ability for the sheriffs to cite these individuals is, would be part of our, part of our ordinance is separate apart from all the other kind of nuisance elements that can take place. The, I'm not sure, Dr. Sanchez, Councilmember Sanchez, did you have a separate component that you wanted to see in the ordinance?
I think, no, no, there's not a separate component. There wasn't an amendment. It's listed on the third slide there. The ordinance aims to prevent and reduce the prevalence of gatherings where alcoholic beverages, marijuana, and illegal substances are served or consumed to underage persons.
Correct.
So if there's a party with loud noise, all the adults are having a crazy time, that's a different, that's a different item. This one is specifically, let's say there's a call, and the sheriffs show up and they notice it's high school age youth. That's where this ordinance comes in.
It's also intended to hold the property owner responsible.
Or tenant, correct? Because let's say-
Well, the tenant also. I mean, if there's a person that's holding this event or this party, they're going to be held responsible. Yes, it's part of the ordinance.
Yep.
The property owner may say, well, I didn't know this was going to take place there. You know, depending on the circumstances, this may be a tool in the toolbox to cite them also. So-
The amendment was in, mayor's request was that we should up the first offense to three thousand five hundred. And so that one, that's something that we can revisit in terms of what are, what were the, what other cities had maximum amounts, and what do we want the dollar amount to be?
Mayor Protem.
One point of clarification for the city attorney, and then a friendly amendment. So this fine, would it be attached to the renter or the landowner or the homeowner?
Could be both.
Okay.
And let me indicate one other thing is that it's going to ultimately rest upon the judge or the court-
Okay.
-to determine if the city establishes thresholds of what we expect those penalties to be, three thousand five hundred, five thousand, five thousand. A judge may say, well, you know, I'm only going to impose one thousand, you know, depending on the enforcement philosophy of the court. To go to your question directly, Mayor Protem, it would, it would hold responsible both the, the party that it's holding the event and also the property owner.
My friendly amendment would be, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Camacho, because I wouldn't want to hold punitive family gatherings that just get a little out of hand. I think we've all been to them, right? And, and, and you never really, you know, when the police show up, they say, turn, turn the radio down, and you never really know how, how much to turn it down where you're not disrupting. So sometimes you get that second visit by police officers. I, I don't think any of us want to be punitive to those types of parties, right, which we've all been to, you know, our neighbors have, so on and so forth. But, but to the point of my colleague, Dr. Monica Sanchez, I think her main concern, and I think the concern of the city is that those parties that are flyer parties, those parties where we know alcohol is going to be present, those parties that have historically, in fact, recently within the city of Pico Rivera, have led to people being stabbed and killed, right? That's happened recently. And I think that's why, that's why we've woken up. I know Councilmember Dr. Sanchez and my colleague, Councilmember Garcia, you've in fact created an ad hoc committee completely for this. So my friendly amendment to consider, and we can maybe bring this back next time, is that for those parties that meet X, Y, Z criteria, a flyer party, drugs where underage people were knowingly taking drugs, those parties would face stiffer fines, would face three thousand five hundred or five thousand dollar one-time fines, right, the first offense. Those parties would meet that criteria. So having a subcategory to, to, to a party, but you'd have to meet a certain criteria that we can, we can prove. And, and, you know, law enforcement, when they show up, they know what's going on. They know if there's underage drinking. They know if there's underage drugs taking place. We see these flyer parties on the internet. If these things went on, then they would face stiffer fines. That's just something to consider.
And the first level of discretion rests on the field with sheriffs. And, and there are, this is a tool in the toolbox. There are other provisions of the penal code, disturbing the peace, I think it's penal code section four fifteen, if I'm not mistaken. Goes back to my old days of working as an intern in the DA's office. That wouldn't be covered, the four fifteen penal code disturbing the peace would not be this municipal code citation. This is a separate component, which is, addresses louder and ruly gathering. So it really would not be appropriate to, the best tool to apply for the Mayor Protem's scenario, set of facts. And it goes through a laundry list of what is, what constitutes loud and unruly conduct. Then it also goes on to who is responsible for that, which also includes the owner of the residence or private property, owner of tenant or lessee of the residence or private property, landlord or another person responsible for the gathering, the person in charge of the residence or other private property, and lastly, the person who organizes, supervises, officiates, conducts, or controls the gathering. So again, I've also been at those kind of family gatherings where, you know, it gets a little bit loud and, you know, the police are there and saying, can you keep it down? That's, I think, a different set of circumstances than what's intended for this ordinance.
And I think this all falls to the complete discretion of our sheriff department as to how to distinguish, you know, what's taking place there and make the appropriate assessment to therefore enforce the appropriate ordinance and so forth. So it lies a lot, actually completely lies on the department. This is, I think it's all great. It's just making sure we don't convolute the two that exist today versus the new one.
So one of our concerns with regards to these parties in public safety is we have seen a pattern of these flyer parties, and they are promoters, and they contact residents of these, you know, throughout cities. It's not just in the city of Pico Rivera. It's some of our neighboring sister cities as well. So they bring in live bands, they bring in DJs. Oftentimes when deputies respond, you know, with family parties, it's most common that everybody there knows everybody. When we go to these flyer parties, there are, they're coming from all different areas, and when these groups get bigger, there is a lot of discontent which can lead to violence. So the underage drinking and the providing alcohol to minors, those are all covered in the penal code section. But when the deputies respond, in the last couple of cases, they've seen the same DJ, and they're getting information that they've come, the visitors to the party have come to the party as a result of seeing it on the internet. And so what happens is when these parties get big, you know, we can respond, and there's two and three hundred people there. Well, we may only have three or four or five deputies that are available to respond. And so it not only puts the public and the community at risk, but also the deputies that are responding. And so when the deputies arrive and they start talking to people, they determine what the source of this party, how this party came to be. And so this is one of the most recent, you know, trends that we have seen. And so that is what gave rise to the conversations as far as how can we address these types of situations so that we can avoid them? Because the types of violence that, you know, that we have seen is something that we want to curb.
And a hundred percent, I think this is why we do it. And, but it's, as we know that, we can separate them easily, because if you're going to charge at the door, you have a promoter, you're making money, you're going to advertise, you know. You know, now you have social media. Back in our days, we had the actual paper, right? But, but social media is the advertisement, and that's how we found out about some of them were happening. So, so I think that in itself would distinguish the, the party itself.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to commend staff for really moving this piece and taking time out to, to deal with this issue. It's an issue that is upon us. When mom or dad or grandparents are away, that's when this thing happens. And I know when we talked on the ad hoc committee, we talked about, you had mentioned, Captain, about the same DJ. How do we start confiscating equipment, maybe incorporate that in there?
Very good. So just to clarify, for, for the public hearing us having this discussion, these are parties that are essentially for profit?
Correct.
Yes.
And these are not family parties?
No, correct.
These are not get-togethers between neighbors. These are at the discretion of the deputies when they arrive and they- These are at the discretion of the deputies when they arrive and they surmise that this is a for-profit, very well organized party, then at that point, then this ordinance can be enforced if needed.
Correct.
And the fines enforced. Very good.
I would like to move this item considering with, I would like to move it today and not go the next reading because if we do it today, we can implement it within 30 days, correct? With mayor's amendment to, at the first violation, put $3,000 rather than 2,500. And then later on, we could revisit and fine tune it, correct?
Well, whatever you introduce tonight will come back to you at your next meeting for second reading. Upon adoption at your second reading, it then takes effect 30 days from that date. If the council changes it at your second reading, it then goes back to first reading. So the numbers and the amount of fine, you can always revisit that down the line. But it would be best if the council tonight defines what those three levels of fines we have, I think on the motion on the floor from the mayor is 35, 5, and 5, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may, I think Dr. Monica Sanchez just brought something up. The holidays are upon us. We need to try and make a decision tonight where we can come back and up the fines. There's going to be New Year's parties coming down the pipe and you don't know, social media is going to take over on that. That's just a thought.
The only thing is, this one will take effect until the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Legally, we can't, but it's important that we move it forward today as such. I think the recommendation of staff is what we have before us. We're just adding and increasing the fees. And so in essence, it's an amendment to the recommendation. So, right?
So then at our December 6 meeting, then we review that. And then hopefully after that one, it'll be implemented by January 6 or 1st.
Correct.
Mayor Protem?
So, Mr. Mayor, from what I understand is that you made an amendment. And then from what I gather, Councilmember Dr. Monica Sanchez seconded that amendment. So, yeah, okay.
The ordinance as presented with the exception of the change in the fines.
Yep, let's do it.
Very good. So just to review, we have covered the memo from the city manager, we've covered written communication, is that correct? And we now completed our oral communications. It's now appropriate to close the public hearing and we have a motion. And I believe we have an amended motion, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a first.
The appropriate motion would be is to introduce the ordinance as presented with an amendment to the fines as recommended by the mayor.
Very good.
That motion is made, it can be seconded and voted on.
I'll move that motion.
Very good. And a second?
A second.
All right, good. So we have a first by Councilmember Dr. Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Garcia. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended.
Thank you for that. And now moving on to our public comments section of the city council meeting. And we have two written public comments. And if we can kindly have those that have their public comments and starting with Lauren Victoria Ruiz. Ms. Ruiz, you have three minutes and you have your timer over your right shoulder there and you can start now.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Victoria Ruiz. I am a citizen of Pico Rivera and have lived here almost 30 years. The city of Pico Rivera's continuous silence on humanitarian issues is no longer acceptable. I have never seen the city stand up for anything other than their police officers and real estate opportunities. I have never once felt like our city government has cared about the marginalized members in our community, with the exception of you today speaking about disabled people. That was really impactful to me. Why am I here? What does Pico Rivera have to do with the genocide being carried out against the Palestinian people? Does the name Northrop sound familiar to anyone? For those that don't know, Northrop is a weapons manufacturer who has supplied militant colonist forces, such as the United States and Israel, with everything they need to colonize and fight for our freedoms while simultaneously slaughtering civilians and claiming resource-rich lands as their own. From the years 1982 to 1997, on the corner of Washington and Rosemead, one of the deadliest and most insidious weapons to ever exist, the B-2 Spirit bomber, was designed, developed, engineered, and built here. Just during those years, our city sold over $20 million in bonds for redevelopment. The taxes alone from that plant generated enough income to help finance a brand-new shopping center off of Whittier Boulevard. Pico Rivera's economy has been dramatically boosted in part by the productions of weapons of war, by the blood spilt by those weapons, by each child torn to bits and left unidentifiable. We have benefited from every single one that has been killed. Can you really say that you stand with those responsible for the death of 4,000 children and sleep well at night? I do not want any person in office that cannot loudly and clearly oppose an ethnic cleansing and heinous war crimes. If like me, you're Mexican, then yes, you come from indigenous people. Is this not the same thing that was done to our ancestors? Would you have stayed silent when they gave out blankets riddled with disease? Would you have stayed silent while settlers were burying native children in unmarked graves? Our silence does nothing for the weeping father in Palestine carrying what's left of his child's bodies in grocery bags. In the past 38 days and 75 years of Israel's aggression, I have seen horrible, truly heinous things, children without limbs covered in ash and under rubble. I have seen women having C-sections without anesthesia. I have seen fathers bury their sons and their grandchildren. I have seen entire generations wiped out. I refuse to do nothing. I refuse an apartheid state. I refuse complacency. I refuse genocide. I refuse to let my government stay silent while war crimes are being committed. Now is the time, Pico Rivera. It is our duty to fight for a better future for generations to come. The time for complacency and your thoughts and your prayers is over. It's come and gone with the propaganda. It's gone. We demand a ceasefire now. We demand a trial for the war crimes of Israel and Benjamin Netanyahu. Now, we demand that our city stand for something for once. Ceasefire today for a free Palestine tomorrow and forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Mrs. Ruiz, thank you for your public comment. Now, our next public comment is provided by Lauren Talbot, and that is from the LA County Public Libraries. Ms. Talbot, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Lauren Talbot and I'm the Community Library Manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Here are our updates for the rest of November. Free COVID tests are back in stock at both libraries. Please visit either library if you are in need of COVID tests ahead of the holiday season. The Pico Rivera Library Book Club will be discussing the book Killers of the Flower Moon next Tuesday, November 21st at 6:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to attend. And both libraries will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Now moving on to the consent calendar items. We have items 3 through 16 as well as items 17. And collectively, it's items 3 through 17.
Mr. Mayor?
18.
Okay, stand corrected. Consent calendar items 3 through 18. And do we have any discussion?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I support the recommendation for item number 11. After the vote, I would just like a clarification on a quick question after we vote.
Very good.
And are you pulling it from the consent agenda? Are you going to allow, move forward?
I want it to move forward, but I just have a clarification.
There's a technical component that I need to address for one of the council members. You're not pulling it from the agenda?
No.
Okay.
After a vote, I just want to clarify something.
We can address that. So there's a motion, is that correct?
Yeah, we have a motion for items on the consent calendar 3 to 18. Do we have a motion on that?
A second.
And before the vote, the mayor, so there's a motion and a second. On item number 11, the record should reflect that Councilmember Camacho will not be participating in that item inasmuch as there's a remote potential financial component of his participation because a family member is employed by this vendor. But that does not mean that you have to leave the room, merely that that is noted on the record and we can take a vote for all the items.
Very good. So we have a first, Councilmember Garcia, a second by Councilmember Dr. Sanchez. And Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Director Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Director Camacho?
Yes.
With the exception, I haven't made a level which will not be participating, yes.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
May I ask that question?
Councilmember Garcia?
Just a quick question. Again, I support this item wholeheartedly. However, I would just like to see a matrix available to wheelchair accessibility. How many vehicles do we have in the city and how we're serving our residents that have those disability needs?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember. In fact, I had the same concerns and I briefly had heard from the operator because we have a dear friend of ours whose wife is bedbound. And he had called me a couple months ago because his wife had a doctor's appointment and he was under a great deal of stress because they didn't have a way to get her there. So I called the operator and I said, hey, we need to make sure that this gentleman's wife is taken, as we do with all of our residents, and she was taken care of. And then the operator reached back to me and said that they just have a new van that's wheelchair accessible. So I was happy to hear about that. But of course, any type of matrix that you need, I'm sure they can get it to you. But I thought I'd just throw that in.
Thank you for sharing that.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we have clarification?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My apologies, counsel. The reason why Councilmember Camacho is not participating is not because of what I stated, but because of the campaign contribution that was received within the last 12 months. There we go. So we'll make sure that's in the record and what I said earlier is deleted.
So we're striking the original commentary for abstaining? And this is the correction?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda, item number 19. Item 19 is an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 8.16, nuisance abatement and administrative citations of the Pico Rivera Municipal Code. And Mr. City Manager, do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a presentation. Alvy Benton Court will introduce our speaker.
Yes, and we have Director Benton Court on the line. Director Benton Court?
We'll go ahead and just turn it over to Stephanie.
Stephanie?
Hello again. The item before you, this item before you is an ordinance amending Chapter 8.16, nuisance abatement and administrative citations of the Pico Rivera Municipal Code. Gabe, if you can please put the next slide and the next one. Thank you. The city recognizes that the general welfare of the community is found in large part on the safety, appearance, and maintenance of properties throughout the city. On June 19th, 2000, the city council adopted ordinance number 946, specifying the violations that would constitute a public nuisance and establish abatement procedures. Since its adoption over 23 years ago, that section of the code has not been updated. The amendments to this chapter will allow the city to address a greater variety of property maintenance issues to enhance and safeguard the city's community beautification and economic development efforts. In addition, the proposed amendments meet the following general plan goals and support the implementation of their corresponding policies. And those goals are land use element goal 3.6, land use element goal 3.7, and economic prosperity element goal 7.5. The goals, in summary, all aim at improving, enhancing, and protecting the community's image to ensure a successful and attractive place for residents and business owners. Gabe, next slide, please. The proposed amendments aim to clarify the intent of the chapter, add property maintenance provisions, and add to the list of identified public nuisance. The general property maintenance provisions will address blighted buildings, neglected landscaping, and parking lot areas. Some examples of the language included in the ordinance are in regards to structure maintenance, things such as any physical damage or deterioration like broken windows, doors, leaking roofs, peeling paint, or other types of damage or deterioration that has to be repaired. In regards to landscape maintenance, landscape areas shall be permanently maintained in a neat and orderly manner and substantially free of weeds, debris, and dead diseased or dying vegetation and broken or defective decorative elements. Foilage throughout the property shall be mowed, groomed, trimmed, and pruned and adequately watered so as to maintain healthy growing conditions and not detract from the appearance of the immediate neighborhood. In regards to maintenance of parking and similar areas, parking, loading, storage, driveway, vehicle maneuvering areas, and paved surfaces shall be kept and maintained so as not to detract from the appearance of adjacent properties. Parking space and pavement striping and signs shall be repainted, refurbished, and or replaced when they become faded, damaged, or destroyed to an extent that they are no longer effective. All obsolete parking space and pavement striping and signs shall be removed or painted to reduce confusion to drivers and pedestrians. In addition to those provisions, in order to aid the city's code enforcement division in addressing some common code violations, language was added to clarify existing public nuisance violations. So an example of that would be currently the code requires that abatement of debris, rubbish, and trash visible only from the public right-of-way. The amendment would include that debris, rubbish, and trash visible from neighboring properties and the public right-of-way must be addressed. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance amending Chapter 8.16, nuisance abatement and administrative citations, and provide direction to staff as deemed appropriate. If approved, staff will bring forth the ordinance for adoption at a regularly scheduled city council meeting, and the ordinance shall become effective 30 days after its adoption. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you for that. And my colleagues, do we have a...
I would just like to say, staff, everything you shared in there, from signage to puddles to painting to striping to handicap access, it's all good stuff. And everyone should be held accountable, including commercial property owners.
Yes, and colleagues, do we have any additional comments?
Agree 100%. Thank you for the presentation. I know this is something we've been working on and it's just, you know, once again elevating the standard of holding a lot of these businesses and property owners accountable, the commercial properties accountable, that make you sure that you can't just abandon your property. This is, you got to make sure it's, there's beautification for the city to appreciate. So thank you, staff.
Very good. And do we have a motion on item 20?
All movement, sure.
All right. We have a first by Councilmember Garcia, a second, Councilmember Camacho. Madam City Clerk, do we have, we kindly have roll call, please?
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you for that. Now we'll close up the consent, or the regular agenda items. And now moving on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. City?
Pardon, Mayor, we have one more item, number 20.
Ah, yes. And number item, number 20 is an ordinance amending Chapter 3.20, purchasing of the Pico Rivera Municipal Code. And Mr. City Manager, do we have a presentation on this?
No presentation, Mayor, on this. We're just adding one word and that's services to an existing item that we adopted previously in, I think, 2021.
Very good, okay. And do we have a motion on the floor for item 20?
Make a motion.
Okay. We have a...
Again.
We have a first by Mayor Protem Lara, a second by Councilmember Garcia. Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That concludes our regular agenda items. Now moving on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items?
None at this time, Mayor.
Very good. And we'll move on to the good of the order, which is intergovernmental agency meetings, AB 1234 reports, new business and old business only. A B one, two, three, four reports, new business and old business only. So we'll start on my left with Councilmember Garcia and work our way.
Thank you, Mayor. No A B one, two, three, four ever. I just want to acknowledge staff and their work on the Clearman Steak and Stein reopening. Excellent. I had an opportunity also to attend the Go-Gettys softball championship where you had the returning champions, the Rolling Thunder, who's one of our veteran commissioners, Gil Perez. Unfortunately, his team went down in the last inning to the Sixers by two runs. It was a good game, though, really good game. And then I had an opportunity to attend a domestic violence workshop at the golf course hosted by Women and Children Crisis Shelter out of Whittier. And Elizabeth Martinez is the E D. There, you met victims, and you met survivors, and they have amazing resources for those of domestic violence. Had a chance to attend the Halloween bingo at the Senior Center where folks dress up. And here's where I want to give staff again props. Pam, whose idea was it to purchase that jumbo screen where you could see the bingo letters on a screen? Awesome. Well done. Well done. I also had an opportunity to attend the Youth at Bassander Tech Lab on Whittier Boulevard. And just to see the input from the youth there, breaking up into groups with Day One, Crystal, Jesus, Javier. I could tell you the youth input that I have seen, how Crystal's able to pull out the information. You go out on Whittier Boulevard, you're looking at bus shelters, you're looking at crosswalks, you're looking at businesses, and you come back and you translate on how you want to see Pico Rivera. It was real moving and job well done with Day One and Crystal. And to you, Javier and Jesus, keep up the good work to solicit that youth input. Also.
Sure, yeah.
You could share them.
Okay.
Okay. La Mano, I'll tell you, if you haven't had carnitas, go to La Mano right down on Whittier Boulevard. It is outstanding. I've been there maybe three times since the opening. It's really, really good. Their food's really good there. And then to our Veterans Day celebration, thanking all our veterans. And I really want to put a shout out to Javier Coriel, who's a lifelong resident here in Pico Rivera. Many of you know Javier, and Hank Leva, who did the flag folding ceremony and who really pinched in and supported the occasion. And finally, just wishing everyone here on the dais and everyone out here, Happy Thanksgiving to you and your loved ones.
Councilmember Dr. Monica Sanchez?
Thank you. I, going back to the Halloween Spooktacular, I want to thank the staff for another great event, highly successful, well-attended, just a lot of fun for everyone in the family, and it was a great event. So my son loves it. Halloween is my favorite holiday. And so I'm really grateful to have that event in the city. And so many people come out and tell us that they enjoy it as well. So I want to thank the staff for all of that hard work. My son's request said that they need more jumpers because the lines were too long. But we're running out of space. We might have to grow to another space. And I explained to them, you know, space is limited. We only, our extension cords only go so far, right? So it is growing, so we do have to consider, you know, lines and more potential vendors and other things to occupy our participants during that time. That was a great event. I also had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day Ceremony. And I want to say thank you too much, so much to the staff again for putting that together. I had an opportunity to attend a dinner at the VFW Post Seventy-seven Thirty-four for Marine Corps Birthday last Friday. We had, they had pastrami sandwiches, cake, a lot of food. And they celebrate, they have particular traditions where they'll cut a cake where, with a saber, with a sword. And the oldest, the oldest veteran, the oldest Marine in the group veteran gets to cut the cake. They have a number of traditions that they do on Marine Corps Birthday. I also attended a breakfast with my colleague Johnny, hosted by the Women's Auxiliary of the American Legion. I forget the number, Johnny, on sorpus. Four eleven, post-four eleven American Legion. They had a fundraiser breakfast. It was delicious. Chilaquiles, biscuits and gravy, omelets, how you want it, doughnuts, everything you can think of. Just too big of a breakfast. So I want to thank the ladies of the auxiliary that planned that for our veterans. So we had a fun-filled weekend celebrating our veterans. The last item that I wanted to mention or to bring, revisit to staff's attention, speaking of the Marines, is the old Marine Corps Base. If we could get an update, it's looking even more horrible. There's more graffiti. And it's just such an eyesore every time I pass by that. So if we can get some type of update, contact our, you know, our Congress members and let them know we need to do something with that because the Marines, if they knew how that looked, I think they would just, you know, they just abandoned it. But, but we need to do something about it because it's really an eyesore.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protem Laura.
Great, thank you. Thank you to Parks and Recs for Spooktacular. I echo the sentiments of Councilmember Dr. Monica Sanchez. It's just always a great event. Everyone, families, young kids, there's always plenty of candy that's given out, right? The prizes, thank you very much. I want to also thank you for Veterans Day, for always hosting that, making sure that there's a flyover. That was well-attended. Once again, thank you to all the veterans who appeared. It was, it's always, it's just always a humbling experience. Not having the, not having served, but to be around those who have served and to know that this thing that we call democracy is put in place and maintained because people like them serve, right? I also want to recognize, thank you Commissioner Martinez for being present. I want to recognize Pico Water District Director, Mr. Angelo, in the audience. Thank you for always coming and being present. I do, I don't have anything for A B one, two, three, four, but I do want to touch on one point. Mr. City Manager, if you could give us an update regarding Mines Avenue?
Yes, Mayor Protem. So currently, right now, we actually are shifting the traffic to the south side in order for the contractor to do work on the north side. They were going to be doing underground utility work and then repaving. Once that striping happened today, once that is completed, it'll shift back to the other side to start work on the south side. We will definitely give the community an update. We'll send out some informational flyers and some social media posts just to let them know the timelines and keep them updated as we move forward.
Great, thank you. It was, I was navigating that street today. People were, it was, it was, it was just. But I'm sure once we get some social media flyers out, maybe some hard copies to those residents that live on Mines, just to give them a brief update, because I know we took away some of their diagonal parking, some of them. So there's concerns because a number of residents have numerous cars. So if we could just give them some sort of timeline, I know we don't have exacts, right? But if we could give them some sort of timeline on how long this will. I got a phone call by a gentleman, and he's like, this isn't gonna, you know, we're not getting diagonal parking until next year. And yeah, he's correct. But I don't know how far next year, right? So just maybe some guidance would be great. But thank you for that update. And otherwise, I wish to, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving that's coming up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Camacho?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for that question regarding Mines. And definitely need that clarification based on the amount of activity going out there. It's gonna look nice when it's done, but I can imagine the frustration with the residents that live there, like any resident would with construction going on your street, right? But, but there's that clarification. I just want to echo my colleagues as it relates to the Spooktacular and the veterans events. The logistics, you know, staff does a great job. It's a lot of moving parts just to get those events going, a lot of programming. We get to see all the facade and be part of the facade, but there's a lot of work that goes behind these events. So thank you for that, Director Ugar. I did have an opportunity to welcome the Governor of the State of Zacatecas, Mexico, that was here. I've had the privilege to have welcomed many of these dignitaries. I visit our city based on the fact that we have quite a few Zacatecanos that live in the city of Pico Rivera, which was a pretty nice welcome for him. Lastly, just want to tell everyone regarding, and a big game happening this Sunday. The Don's Junior Pee Wee's are in the championship. And Coach Paul Camacho, when the season began, he guaranteed and promised, he's like, I'm gonna take them to the championship, and here they are. So they're representing, they're playing at twelve p.m. on Sunday at La Puente High School. So kudos to the team, kudos to the coaching to get them to this point. I'm sure they're gonna come back with a trophy, which we'll recognize them here in the dais. If anybody wants to be there, we can participate and support them. So outside of that, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Camacho. Now, on the items that are my A B one, two, three, four, new business and old business, I just want to congratulate our existing businesses with their re-grand openings, which is La Mano and Clearman Steakhouse, Steak and Steak and Stein. It's always a privilege and an honor to see that our businesses are reinvesting in our community because, one, they have faith in the, in the community, and, two, and in the future of the community. So thank you for that re-grand opening. And of course, to our staff and our veteran-rich community. For the veterans event, just an amazing event. I'm just very honored to be a part of a city and a community that, the backbone, are veterans. And we want to keep it that way. It was a fantastic event. And we also had the Halloween Spooktacular. I wasn't able to attend, but I just saw it through my cell phone, and I saw, boy, that was great. Everybody with their fantastic Halloween costumes. I look forward to attending next year, and I already have a couple of costume ideas. And with that, I do want to?
Mayor, I forgot one item, if I may.
Yes, I'll go ahead and finish up here, and then we'll follow, we'll put that remainder item. I did have the opportunity to go with the California delegation of mayors over the past week over to China. And we did two things. We promoted trade between California and China. But more importantly, we celebrated the Flying Tigers. And that was a group of Air Force military from the United States that helped the Chinese during World War against Japanese aggression. And it's been celebrated for the last eighty years where our servicemen helped during World War Two. And that's where I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Melvin McMullin, and he was one of our honorary speakers at our veterans event. And it's just funny to see how you get to see a local resident in a neighboring city across the Pacific and knowing that you're so close to each other. And I found it just fascinating that his son was a teacher at El Rancho High School for, I believe, over twenty-five years. So that bond and connection was really nice. And I really thought that it was important to have him speak at our veterans event, which we did. So a big shout out to Sergeant Melvin McMullin for being a part of our veterans event. And with that, I do want to say may everybody have a successful and safe holiday season. We got Christmas and Thanksgiving and all sorts of holidays for all sorts of people. And in order to close this council meeting prior to, we'll have Councilmember Sanchez add an additional item.
I forgot to mention one item in my report. Councilmember Garcia and I were invited to attend a meeting at the Monobello Unified School District Office. And the purpose was because they're interested in hosting a student, student government leadership day. And one of the requests is, they have the date set already for May second. And they would like to use our dais in which we identify students to come here for a day and have a mock meeting with students and invite us as well to engage with the students, including our city attorney and question-and-answers, including our sheriffs, to see, to give us their suggestions. They have a curriculum or type of program that they follow. They did it last year with City of Commerce. And this year, they want to expand to our city. And I thought it was a great idea, and I told them that I'll bring it back for our hopeful support and discussion. And so if we can agree to support this in some way, I know our funds are limited, but I would love for us to participate. I believe it was done in the past, many years prior to me, that they mentioned. But I think it would be a great idea. There'll be students that live in Pico Rivera. They may attend Monobello High School, but we also could draw from El Rancho High School and connect. And I believe our city attorney has some expertise in this area. So I would like to request that we support this in this endeavor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And with that, I did want to highlight that I'll be doing the Mayor's State of the City address, which is the achievements that the city has accomplished in two thousand and twenty-three. And that'll be December sixth at Mi Asienda, eleven o'clock. And everybody is welcome to come and support all our achievements that we've done in two thousand and twenty-three, and of course, into the future.
Mayor, I have one last message that I received, that we had a death in the, a resident in the city. Pico Boys former board member and coach Anthony Garcia, if we could please add that in our?
Yes, and we would like to close in memory of Anthony Garcia as well as our resident, Lourdes Abad. And if we can kindly bow our heads in memory of our two residents. And with that, our city council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.